Make sure we have the right papers in front of us. All right, at this time I'm going to call the Crystal City Council to order. Let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Or here, sorry.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
All right.
I like you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I see they're complimenting you, they're complimenting me.
All right, council members, we have an agenda before us. I'm looking for a motion on that agenda. Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the agenda before us.
All right, thank you. Nancy?
I'll second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. Next on the agenda is announcements and proclamations. Got to find that part. Too many papers, hold on. Chief Revering?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Did you have a quick comment on this before?
Do you mind?
Yeah, not at all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as you are aware in your packet, you will notice that next week is Police Week, where we honor those men and women who have lost their lives in the line of duty. And normally during Police Week here in the city of Crystal, we do a bunch of different activities for our police department employees, also for our retired employees. However, with the assumption of later on tonight of you approving something that's pretty big, we are pretty busy with actually moving this week and next week throughout different areas of Crystal because of the new police department. And so we have taken a pause in what we're doing, at least for our employees, this week and next week, and we'll move that probably into the later summer, early fall. But I just want to let you know that, as you know, we have great men and women working for your organization, for your community, serving all residents every single day, 24 days a week, seven day, or 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in this noble, honorable profession. And I truly appreciate, I want to say just humbly, that I can't do my job without all of them. And so, thank you for recognizing the proclamation tonight, Mayor, and I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. You know, when it comes to police, it's always one of those things that... You know, I have a soft spot in my heart for public safety, being a part of fire, but police is something different. It has always been something different. And, and it's just, I'm great, I'm thankful for having the, the ability to express that gratitude to the department and to all police officers, you know, from time to time. It's just one of my greatest pleasures, so. With that, I'd like to read the proclamation into the, to the record at this time. National Police Week is May 9th to the 15th, 2021. Peace Officer Memorial Day is May 15th, 2021. Whereas the week of May 9th to the 15th, 2021, is National Police Week in the United States. Whereas there are over 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Crystal Police Department. Whereas over 56,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over 17,000 injuries. Whereas since the first record recorded death in 1791, a total of 22,611 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and died in the line of duty, including 293 Minnesota law enforcement officers. Whereas the names of these dedicated police servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 394 new names of fallen heroes, including two in the state of Minnesota, are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial this spring, including 295 line of duty deaths in 2020 and 99 officers who died in previous years, but whose stories of sacrifice have not, have been lost to history until now. Whereas on May 15 is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families, and the US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of the City of Crystal, hereby recognize May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as National Police Week in the City of Crystal, Minnesota, and call upon the citizens of Crystal to observe this week in honor of the men and women whose diligence, professionalism keep the residents in the City of Crystal safe. They did this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you all your staff. All right. So we have another... What do I have here? Am I reading or?
No, you don't. It's just recognition.
So, on the 2019 Government Financial Officers Certificate of Excellence for Financial Reporting Award, that is, is for our finances.
Correct.
So our, we've won an award, we seem to win that award pretty regularly, and we kind of owe that to our financial director.
You got it. We have a crackerjack finance staff. And so, after you received the 2019 Audit and Annual Report last year, our finance staff submitted it to the Governor, Government Finance Officers Association, and they were awarded the certificate, certificate of excellence. Goodness, I can't talk tonight. Which is the highest recognition they can get. So, the council should just be very proud of our finance department and all the work they do.
Yeah, and this award kind of comes from going above and beyond what's required, so that's a, that's a big deal. So thank you for that. We do have a consent agenda, I'd like to read that into the record at this time. Council will consider the following items which are routine and non-controversial in nature, and we'll do that in a single motion. There's just a few items here. First is the approval of the minutes from the following meetings. The first is a council meeting from April 20th, 2021, in the work session from that same date. Then approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is in her office. And then approval of a resolution accepting the donations from donation boxes for, for Crystal Canine Fund. So that's all we have on that one. Looking for a motion? Therese?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, looking for a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next is open forum. Anne, would you be willing to hold off until we get on the topic of Stevo's? Okay, great. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during open forum about other issues or comments or topics? Seeing no one, we'll skip by open forum. And we'll move right into the Stevo's topic. So we have our city clerk Chrissy Series to address the council on this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Good evening. Mr. Becky, owner of Stevo's at 4900 West Broadway, is applying to expand their licensed premises to include an outdoor patio and smoking area. A diagram and details regarding the proposed expansion were provided in the staff report. However, just to note, this morning staff was notified of a slight change in the fence height from four and a half feet to five feet. The required application documents have been reviewed by staff, including for zoning, building, and fire code compliance. A public hearing notice was published in the Sun Post on April 22nd, and to my knowledge, no correspondence has been received in regards to the proposed expansion. Mr. Becky, as well as Allison, the manager, are here this evening and available to answer questions. And staff is recommending approval of the expansion on the licensed premises for Stevo's.
All right.
And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Chrissy. Are there any questions from the council related to Chrissy's report? All right, seeing none. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for testimony if there's anybody wishing to address the council on this issue, and that would be your opportunity.
Yes, hi. My name's Amberger. I live in the apartment building right behind Stevo's. My windows face Stevo's, and I see no problem with it. And I've been in that building 18 years, and I see no problem with it.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Anybody else wishing to give any testimony regarding this issue? Seeing no one, anyone online? Seeing no one. All right, I will close the public hearing at this time. Mr. Becky, would you be willing to step forward? This is where the council interrogates you? No, I'm kidding. This just gives us an opportunity. This gives us an opportunity to have a little conversation with you. You don't get a chance to have one-on-ones with people very, that often, so I'm guessing, knowing this crowd, that will, there will be a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Just as to how things are going. Any, any questions from the council? Yep, Nancy?
The, the area, I'm just trying to orient myself. Is this the entrance to your bar on, from the south side?
Yep.
So the, it's a great drawing, by the way.
But, so the smoking would be closest to Broadway?
West Broadway, yeah.
And then the seating would be?
On the other side.
On the other side. Okay. Any issues with smoking and outside? I know it's all outside, but you don't perceive any issues with that, with diners and that? Pretty cool about it. Okay, very good. Thank you. And are you still offering your breakfast pizza?
Yeah.
It's the best. Thank you.
What time do you guys open in the morning? Eight o'clock? Yeah, I thought so.
Hi, so would this be permanent? Like you're, you're constructing something and a patio like other restaurants have patios?
Yes.
Yes.
I noticed last summer you had a tent in your parking lot.
Yeah, that was kind of a temporary.
COVID thing.
Through COVID, yeah.
Okay.
How long have you been in business?
Well, I've been working there for 43 years, and I've owned it for 22.
Okay.
Very nice. Nancy?
Is there rooftop or pergola or anything, or is it just open air?
No, we're going to do open, and then we'll have umbrellas on the tables.
Oh, nice, okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
I'm looking forward to it.
Oh, good.
There's so many times that, that I'm trying to look for a place to eat, and your place is always crowded. You gotta love that. The food's really good.
We're very fortunate.
The food's really good. Some, some of it is, the stuff that I like isn't so good for me, but I really love it.
Good, thank you.
When I get a chance to go, I do. In fact, I think I was there a couple, well, I've been here, there twice this month.
Good.
So it's, it's a, it's kind of, it's, I've come to really enjoy that place. It's got a nice atmosphere.
Can't tell you how much we appreciate it.
Yeah, and I don't know, I'm partial to, of course, the West Metro Fire Rescue District.
Sure.
Relief Association.
They've been great.
Yeah, great partners.
Yes, absolutely.
I used to be the CEO of that organization, but I had to give that up when I came here. And then we have one of our council members who works there.
Yeah, Julie Dassler.
Yeah, so it was nice to see her after her departure from here, to see her. So it's, it's a great community there, I think.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council members? All right, well, I'm looking forward to it. I think we have to come up with some type of motion, and we'll, we'll see how this goes.
Okay.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this topic? Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve an on-sale, oh wait, did I go too far? The on-sale liquor license expansion, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, for Robic Industries, Inc., DBA Stevo's, located at 4900 West Broadway.
All right, looking for a second on that? Go ahead, Dave.
Second it.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations. Yeah, and thank you. I, yeah, we appreciate you guys. All right. Goodbye, Anne.
Bye.
Bye, Anne.
So we are back to our regular agenda, or starting our regular agenda. First item on that list is our disbursements of $25,000 or greater, and I will read those into the record here momentarily. That's for you. First item is logist expenses for the monthly. That's for hosting and support. Fifty, $48,595. Sexton Fleet Services for new truck to replace number 301 for $32,187. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for the monthly cost for March, $177,294. Minnesota Para for payday to 4/16th for the employee and city required contribution, $63,766. Met Council Watershed Services for May, $143,035. Waste Management for the recycling costs for March, $51,279. And total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $516,158 and 68 cents. Any questions from the council on any of these items? Come on, there's a glaring one. What's number 301? Does anybody know? Do you know 301? What, what truck that is?
Who knows? Sitting in the back, girl. It's utilities.
It's a street supervisor truck.
Street supervisor, supervisor truck, okay, great. Anything else? All right, seeing no other questions, looking for a motion? Therese?
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures over $25,000.
All right, looking for a second? Brendan?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next item is kind of a routine thing. It's a police station project. Anne, you're here to address the council on that one?
I am, thank you. This has been a tortured process, but we are here tonight to ask for your approval of the contracts, the various contracts for the police station project. If you'll recall, you rejected the first round of bids last year or earlier this year so that we could comply with state requirements due to the money we received from the state. In March, you approved the revised plans and specs and authorized the updated, or authorized bids for the updated plans. And we opened bids on April 20th. We received 146 bids. And this morning, I sent out an updated resolution with the recommended awards for the various work components. And the total project is, construction is just under, over 30, $13 million within the $16 million overall project budget. Melissa Stein of Wold and Jason Rentmeister, Meester, pardon me, of Carles Anderson, our project manager, are here to answer any questions you have, but we are recommending approval of the lowest responsible bidders outlined in your resolution.
All right, thank you, Anne. Questions from the council? Nancy?
Hi, thanks. A question for the group here. Is this, are the contractors that you decided on, most of them you have done business with before? Are some of these new? Established?
Yes, we've worked with pretty much all these guys.
Okay.
And gals.
And gals. Thank you.
Part of the reason we chose, I mean, we, well, part of the reason we chose Carles Anderson to be our project manager is the relationship they had with the various contracting community, to be sure we get the most competitive prices.
That's fantastic, thank you.
All right. Brendan?
I don't recall, but is this still in the, what was the first bid that came back?
Pretty close to this, right? Jason, I'm looking at you.
Correct. Yes, correct. They were just, just a touch, touch lower, but we've made some adjustments to account for those requirements from the state and accounts for most of the, most of the difference.
Because we were just under 13 million, right? The first time around, I think?
Going up here.
I know, I should know this. It should be etched in my memory forever.
No, we were, um...
We were over.
Were we? We were closer to 12, probably, the first time.
Yeah, we were about 11.6 on the data.
But with all of the requirements, we're close to what we had estimated between the first estimate and the second estimate.
That's what I remember.
Okay, it's good memory.
That's what I remember, okay.
All right. Okay. John, you had a question? Budishevsky, go ahead.
Thank you. Would you speak to the state requirements? I mean, I know we have some constituents that are watching. Could you just talk a little bit about that and what that exactly means in this process?
Sure, I can take this one, Jason. So we had to, for state funding, there are requirements called B3, if any of you are aware of those, but essentially it is sustainable and kind of efficiencies, energy efficiencies of buildings. And so there are more rigorous requirements that we need to, or needed to make sure our building was upholding and, and meeting. And so we did have to change some of our mechanical systems to be able to meet that. We did have to increase some of our insulation costs. So our building itself, from a perimeter standpoint, or like a footprint standpoint, and from a interior layout, had not changed at all. But we did have to change kind of the infrastructure and some of the structure components that went into the building. Hopefully that answered your question, John.
I could have a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So then, my next question is, is like, so that's great, so that's the actual structural, you know, aspect of the building itself, but what about the contractors? Do you vet the contractors to make sure that they themselves are, how would you say, reliable in terms of putting together a project like this? Because the last building has served us for quite a number of years, 70 years, right, roughly? And so, I mean, is this building, we want to make sure that the people that are building this building are certified and qualified, and, you know, they're the ones that we're relying on to build this building, but also you guys to make sure that you're bringing in the best possible people possible. So is that, if you could speak to that a little bit as well, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can. Melissa, I can take this one. Yes, as part of our process, with, with the, the way the bidding works on these public projects, you are somewhat subject to, you know, whoever is low and is capable of performing that work, then that's, that's who we've got to work with. But it's our job to, to lay out those scopes and work with Wold to make sure that the specifications and the, and the details and everything are very clear to, to make sure that a quality project is put into place. That's part of our role. Carles Anderson, as the construction manager, to make sure that that work that is being placed meets those plans and specs, is of good quality, and will be coordinating with industry partners, the contractors, manufacturers, as well as Wold and the city to, to make sure that that is the case. We go through each of these contractors after bid day, after bids are opened, and vet them and review the, the scopes of work with them to make sure that they've included everything that they should have. And so we don't send this recommendation to you until we've gone through and vetted each and every one of them. Does that answer?
Oh, I was going to say, I was going to just add on to that. We also, you know, we work in public sector, Wold and Carles Anderson, we want to build buildings that are going to, you know, kind of stand the test of time, if you will, longstanding facilities. And so, the way that we design and put our construction documents together along with the materials that we are selecting and that are on your facility are to be a 40, 50-year-old building, if not longer, because we do know that this, you know, it's public sector, it's, it's your, it's not your funding, it's, it's, you know, you are, have to be responsible for that, where that money's coming from. And so we want to make sure this building is going to, to stand that as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Therese?
In the event, I mean, I know to comply with the state requirements for the state funding we're getting for this building, for example, the electrician that, that's chosen as a subcontractor, they need to be certified electricians and part, not necessarily part of the union, but comply with the union requirements for electricians. So there are not a lot of day laborers that come in and are not accountable? So are, is Carles Anderson sure that, that all of those aspects of the state funding are being complied with?
Absolutely. Yes, that's, that was included in the documents, and we have gone through that as part of our review or scoping process with the contractors prior to, prior to this meeting today?
So every one of these subcontractors, excuse me, subcontractors Carles Anderson has worked with before?
Correct.
How about Wold, has Wold, are you familiar with Melissa, with all of these subcontractors?
Yes, yep, we have worked with them. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Nancy?
Well, it's related to this construction project and the, and the bidding, but what's the timeline?
Yeah, I can, I'll speak to that. I'm sure Jason and Melissa will correct me if I'm wrong, but the goal is to start demolition, I believe, the week of June 22nd, and hopefully have a move-in date sometime between June and August of 2022. Oh, they're both shaking their head yes, so I did pretty good. And, and if I could just say, Mr. Mayor, too, too, I know that a lot of questions regarding the contractors, and just know that I have met the, the supervisor who's going to be on scene here at this site overseeing this entire project, and he was recently at a different city, and I know that police chief very well, and he and I have had constant communication over the last couple of weeks here. And the soup that we have that's going to be here is going to be phenomenal to work with, and he isn't going to put up with any crap. So we're excited about that. And, see, I said crap, I probably shouldn't have, Jason, but I did. But I know Jesse will not put up with that, and, and he is going to make sure to hold their feet to the fire. So I'm confident that the building is going to be great.
Within budget, awesome.
Yes, he is, he is doing outstanding on his current project. He's saved quite a bit of money and has saved quite a bit of time, so you'll be more than happy with Jesse.
Awesome. Sounds like a good one. Any other questions? All right, Brendan?
All right. Moment I've been waiting for. I make a motion to approve the City of Crystal Award Contracts for Construction of New Police Station Project.
Awesome, thank you. Nancy?
I will second that.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
We can't thank you enough, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason and Melissa, for being here.
We appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. So, people are on the move. People will be displaced soon.
Yep, very soon.
Yeah, that's a pretty short timeline from approval to actual moving of desks. I think that's already happening, isn't it?
Yep, yep, it is. I meant to mention, I apologize, I just, sorry, Mark. One-third of the department moved out today, actually, with the hopes that you were going to approve this. The other one-third will move tomorrow, and then the last one-third will be moving the beginning of June. So, again, thank you. It's been a great, long process, and then the next 12 to 14 months will be even better. So thank you.
We're excited.
Thank you.
After 12 to 14 months, thanks, yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, Jim?
Yes, Nancy?
I had a suggestion. The old cell, holding cell, can that go to the history? Can that go to the historical society?
It is so funny that you're bringing that up. We actually, I was- it was a question that I was gonna ask Melissa, and, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna- we're gonna talk before it gets demolished.
Nice.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That came with the original construction, didn't it?
It sure did, yeah.
Okay.
One of the reasons why we're not passing audits, no.
She's not kidding.
No, she's not. Therese?
Is there anything else of historical significance that should be thought of before the building gets demolished?
There definitely might be.
Possible asbestos?
Yeah.
Asbestos, no, no, thanks.
We will- we will make sure and comb through it before it gets, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. All right. Next, we will consider a resolution authorizing the contract for sanitary sewer lining project for Hagemeister Park. We have Mark Ray, our Public Works Director, to address the council. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, councilmembers. I had so many ways I wanted to start with this, but I've decided, you know, speaking of historic, uh, the sanitary sewer, the City of Crystal was built out generally actually in the late nineteen fifties. Um, and so one of those pipes, as you can see here, runs south to north from Fortieth up to Forty-first, uh, through Hagemeister Pond, or Park Pond. The project proposed tonight actually consists of three different phases. The first one will be the repairing of two sections where the pipe is actually basically crumbled. Flow's still getting through, but the pipe is not quite all there. Uh, the second part will be actually lining the pipe. So this is the lining, structural lining that we've done elsewhere in the city previously. And then finally, the third one is, uh, actually lining the manhole structures, which, on the photo right there, are all the little circular green circles. Uh, so again, kind of a reminder of what the lining actually is. The pipe on the left is an old pipe. Now, I think it's actually ductal iron, which, these are clay pipes, so don't get too spun up about that. But the one on the right is what it'll look like after. Uh, kind of, it's a- it's a PVC product that's put in long-term. So, breaking down three different phases, uh, the first, so we got quotes for pretty much every different section here, uh, and I'll talk about the third one later. So repair two sections, the lowest one's Dave Perkins Contracting. I want to note, this actually is- work has already been completed because we had to sequence all this stuff, and so that work was done as soon as we possibly could, earlier this spring. Uh, second phase is lining the main pipe. We did open bids, actually, well, actually, yeah, we'd opened bids a few weeks ago. In Situform was the lowest bidder. Um, we've actually worked with them in the past, they're the ones that did our previous work as well. And then finally, the lining of the manhole structures, uh, we have one price for that. As you saw, because this goes through a pond, some of these manholes are actually below the water table, and so we needed to kind of go with, let's call it a beefier product, because we knew there's water pressure trying to get in all the time. Uh, so that's why we went with the product we did. And the, um, product manufacturer has only licensed one vendor to do work in the state of Minnesota. So that's why we have the one that we have, Hyperline. So, the budget for this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total cost is a hundred and, we'll say, thirty-six thousand, so a little under budget. Uh, so the item before you tonight is two different motions. One is approving the pipe lining, the second one is approving the sanitary manhole lining. With that, are there any questions?
Questions for Mark? Go ahead.
You know what my question's gonna be? No, this does not collect waste from the new PD. No, no. Separate line. Why is there a hundred thousand dollar difference in those two bids? Yeah, so, um, couple of reasons for that one. Uh, first of all, because it's, um, through the pond, we required a different type of curing. So there's two ways to cure the pipe. One is just hot air, basically, the other one is water. Because this pipe was adjacent to water, we wanted to make sure there was water pressure pushing out, so there were no folds or bends in the sewer pipe. Um, the second one is material costs right now are ridiculous, especially when it relates to anything that has oil based in it, because of what happened in Texas with the freezing temperatures. To the point where we're calling for parts, and we're getting pro- we're getting prices that are good for three days, for just routine, like, rings for- for manholes and stuff. This is all epoxy. So there's a lot of, um, different fabrication for this, and those prices are very variable. So, we think that's probably what the difference was. We also have a deadline to complete this by the end of August, because we still need to get in this year to do the manhole lining this year. So, um, had we not worked with In Situform multiple years before, this might be a different conversation, but we have a long history with In Situform, um, so we're confident in the product.
All right, other questions?
I should say, not that this'll make you feel any better, but that price is actually higher than our estimate was. So, still within budget, but it's not quite what we hoped for.
Okay. All right. No more questions for Mark? Do we have a motion? We've got two of them. You have two of them on the plate? Anybody?
Did anyone raise their hand online?
Were you able to do them all in one?
No.
No, we got to do them separately?
Two separate. Brendan?
All right. Um, I make a motion authorizing the contract for the sanitary- sanitary sewer lining.
Good, thank you, Brendan. Looking for a second? Dave?
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?[1631.88]